Thank you. Things I never expected to hear.
What?
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us here in the Clarence D'Urbans City Council Chambers for the hearing on City Council Bill 16-0724, Ordinance Franchise Comcast of Baltimore City LLC. My name is Bill Henry. I am the Councilman from the 4th District and Chair of the Housing and Community Development Committee. To my left, we have Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark of the 14th District, Member of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
To my right, we have Mr. Richard Crumrick of Council Services, Staff to the Committee, and to the far right, we have Mr. Paul Plymouth of the City Council President's Office. And we are joined in chambers this evening by Ms. Angela Gibson, representing the Mayor's Office. The franchise for Comcast is one that many of the Baltimore City residents are familiar with. It is -- we have been in the middle of a franchise for a number of years, and this renewal will also be a lengthy one that we are considering today. So I am looking forward to hearing testimony that speaks to the positive benefits to Baltimore City of continuing the relationship that we have with Comcast. One thing that I would like to make clear for anybody watching at home, ironically enough, probably on Comcast cable, but now also potentially online because Charm TV now streams all of these meetings and hearings online as well, which still offers the possibility that you're watching through Comcast, but just through Comcast Internet rather than Comcast cable. But what I wanted to make clear is that this is the franchise renewal for Comcast cable and that Internet is a different business than cable and is not regulated in the same way. And I am sure that either the Mayor's Office of Cable and Communications, or the Law Department, or Comcast itself will speak further to that in the course of these proceedings. We will start with looking at city agency reports. I have reports here in the folder from the City Solicitor's Office, favorable with comments, Housing and Community Development, no objection. Transportation, no objection, defers to Mayor's Office of Cable and Communications. Mayor's Office of Cable and Communications, favorable with comments. And fire, no objection. We do not have a report from DPW, and we do not have a report from the Planning Commission. I'm sorry. Ms. Gibson.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Department of Commerce and the Planning Commission were taken off the first year of the past.
Oh, they were not.
They were taken off.
Okay.
The microphones are not on.
No, that was -- okay. All right. Then we will strike those from the bill folder. And in that case, we have all the agency reports. Thank you. Are any of the agencies that are here and have submitted reports, do any of them need to in any way change their report? Mr. Tava. He's going to come up to the podium.
I think that's the one that's on duty. I think terrible if from the Law Department. I don't know if I want to change my report, but I did want to make sure that I inform the committee just a little bit further. I know you're giving your remarks, Mr. Chair, I understand you're aware of some of them.
Hello.
Here we go.
Okay.
Get excited here. So, we stand by the report, but a few things that I wanted to make sure that you were aware of, this committee was aware of, that the City Council should be aware of, is that if there is any sentiment for not approving this franchise, then it will trigger an administrative hearing, not a legislative hearing. And under the administrative hearing, there are four factors that the administrative body that hears this can consider. And any of those four factors could disqualify, that is, you can fail to renew on any of those four factors, but if it's not one of those four, you can't move forward with a failure to renew. So let me just take a moment just to tell you what those four factors are.
Okay.
It's in my report, it's on the first page, but let me just say what they are. So we have to determine, one of the factors is whether Comcast has substantially complied with the material terms of the existing franchise. So if you find that to be a problem, that's a reason to not deny. Or you can take a look at the quality of the operator's service, and we're talking about whether or not the signal quality is good, or whether response to consumer complaints is a problem. Basically, we're looking at operational characteristics. Then the third thing that may be an issue, which is whether or not Comcast has the financial, legal, or technical expertise to deliver the cable service. And finally, whether Comcast's proposal that's before you is whether it's reasonable to meet the future cable-related needs of the community. Bottom line is, is that, as you pointed out, Mr. Chair, that if there is any concern about the ability, you know, we really can't fail to approve the franchise just based on the fact that maybe the broadband service isn't as robust as we would like it to be, because frankly, it's a different service, as you pointed out. Talking about Internet service, so we're looking really only at the television, the broadcast?
Looking at broadcast.
We're not really looking at broadband. We can't really deny, we can't really refuse to deny, just based on any concern about our broadband capabilities. Let me move to the next piece, which is the process piece. One of the, as you all know, a franchise has to go before their Board of Estimates to determine what the fee is, and they usually also establish the conditions under our charter. But federal law also cuts into that. Federal law tells us what the maximum fee can be, and I can tell you that this franchise that's before you, the agreement that's before you, charges the maximum fee allowed under federal law. That's 5% of gross profits. That's what we charge now, and that's what's in this bill. So we do have, the Law Department has brought one of the people who are involved, our lawyer, Minda Goldberg, who was involved with negotiations. We also have our outside legal expert or consultant, which is Casey Lied. We've brought them. In case we get into the legal details of what this contract is about, they can answer that.
I'm sorry, the, who, could you point out the outside counsel?
Casey Lied.
Okay. Yep. You were referred to a number of times in other discussions where you weren't there, so just putting a face to a name. Okay, thank you.
So that's all my remarks at this point.
All right. Actually, you've reminded me of an issue that we had discussed previously about the fact that how Comcast deals with service complaints is one of the four items that is, we'll say, tracked.
It's one of the considerations that you can have.
One of the considerations. And we had discussed that it would be appropriate for the city to track those as well as possible. And one of the things that could help the Mayor's Office of Cable and Communications in doing that tracking would be for us to set up a similar 3-1-1 system to what we do right now with BG&E and Streetlights, where BG&E is really responsible for doing a lot of the repairs to a lot of the streetlights, but people call the city, or either call or use the online 3-1-1 system, and then they are sent from there to BG&E to be dealt with, but it allows the city and DOT to track those problems so that we are aware of them rather than just them being sent off to BG&E to be dealt with, or in this case, sent off to Comcast. They would enable the city to keep track of them and actually more easily serve as the liaison between city constituents and Comcast in the resolution of those problems. So I just wanted to mention that here during the public hearing, that it is the hope and expectation of working with the administration to make that change to 3-1-1 in the near future. Okay. But thank you. Any questions?
No. Are you, gentlemen, are you suggesting that that become an item on the 3-1-1 list?
Yes.
Comcast, so that, are you envisioning that we would be the first line of defense? Or?
Not so much the first line of defense, but in that if, we have invested a lot of effort into trying to get people to, when they have a problem, call 3-1-1.
Right.
And let 3-1-1 know. And many of the agencies have gotten used to that, to the point where they would really prefer to get the input through the 3-1-1 system. This is merely a way of trying to standardize it so that the problem would still then be sent to Comcast to be resolved, but it then, you know, Ms. Lee and the Mayor's Office of Cable and Communications would definitely get notified that there had been a problem. Whereas, right now, if somebody just calls their councilperson to complain, and we have the temerity to just reach out directly to Comcast because we know who to call there when there's a problem, then the problem might get solved, but the Mayor's Office of Communications doesn't know that it happened and doesn't have it listed.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. If there, unless there are any other agency reports or statements, I would ask Ms. Lee from the Mayor's Office of Cable and Communications to speak to the bill.
In addition to the report that I've submitted to committee, I do have some prepared remarks and want to state, my name is Tanee Lee, and I'm Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Cable and Communications and the General Manager of Charm TV. I would like to first thank Committee Chairman Bill Henry, members of the Housing and Community Development Committee, the City Council, and the citizens of Baltimore for the opportunity to speak today. As Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Cable and Communications, I have functioned as the lead negotiator for the City of Baltimore in the cable franchise renewal process with Comcast. Comcast operates a cable franchise in the city that is expected to expire December 31st, 2016. Throughout this process, my office has been assisted by our legal department, and specifically Minda Goldberg of the City Solicitor's Office, and as already mentioned, outside counsel Balla Hertz and Lied. We have also received input from the Department of Transportation, the Mayor's Office of Information Technology, Employment Development, and Minority and Women-Owned Business on key components of the proposed franchise renewal. Before I speak on the tenets of the franchise renewal bill, I would first like to speak on the franchise renewal process. And for more than two years now, the city has been actively involved in negotiations with Comcast. Comcast initiated the franchise renewal process with a written notice to the city to enter into informal negotiations with the city on January 31st, 2014. In June of 2015, the Office of Cable and Communications fielded a community needs assessment survey among citizens and customers of Comcast in Baltimore City. The survey was fielded via telephone from June 1st to June 30th of 2015 and consisted of 600 randomly selected residents in the Comcast Baltimore service area. 300 of those residents were Comcast subscribers and 300 residents were non-subscribers. Respondents were asked questions on the needs assessment, provided key insights on respondents' familiarity with Comcast and experiences, the general level of satisfaction with Comcast cable television service, and perceptions of public education and government, also known as PEG access channels, and the related access needs. As is common practice, the city has used the needs assessment to focus its negotiation with Comcast on key issues, and over the past two years, my office has had several meetings with Comcast to discuss the proposed franchise focusing on the topics of customer service, franchise fees, PEG fees, PEG channels, HD or high-definition, and public rights of way. My office posted the findings from the needs assessment to our website in November 2015 and held a public meeting related to the franchise renewal on December 1st, 2015. Our goal has been to negotiate the best terms and to get the most value in a cable franchise renewal for the City of Baltimore and its citizens. I would now like to highlight the key components of the proposed franchise renewal bill. The term of the proposed franchise is for 10 years. The franchise would deliver three streams of revenue to the city over 10 years. The first stream conduit fee revenue, which we've estimated at approximately $30 million, franchise fee revenue. The city will receive 5% of Comcast gross cable revenues in Baltimore, and we're estimating that at approximately $70 million. PEG fee revenues are also estimated at $14 million. I want to point out here that we've negotiated nearly 75 increase in PEG fee revenues over the 10-year deal, with up to 25 cents per subscriber per month allocated to operational costs. In addition to those benefits, we have a very detailed customer set of standards mentioned in the appendix in this franchise bill. We've also provided for the allocation of up to six standard definition channels for PEG, the allocation of three HD channels for PEG, with two of those channels occurring in the first year of the deal. Video-on-demand programming and detailed reporting and quarterly compliance meetings around employment development and MBE/WBE initiatives within the city. In addition to what is highlighted in the franchise bill, Comcast has agreed to the following additional commitments. A $400,000 grant for the Youth Works Summer Employment Opportunity Program, expansion of Internet Essentials to public housing residents in the city, complementing broadband service to 17 city locations, six of which are located in public housing computer labs and 11 in recreation center computer labs. A $100,000 grant for computers to replenish computer labs in public housing complexes and recreation centers, and finally, more than 300 municipal courtesy accounts valued at more than $3 million over the 10 years. This does conclude my prepared remarks, and thank you again.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. I believe next we are going to have a group from Comcast. Is it one individual, or is it a couple from Comcast speaking? Just pick, pick an order, just one person at a time, that's all.
So I'm going to testify first, just for Comcast.
Okay. We do have some other folks here, I think, that want to weigh in, but thank you. My name is Donna Rowley Washington, and I'm the Regional Vice President of Government and Regulatory Affairs for Comcast Beltway Region. Antoine Banks, Senior Manager of Government Affairs, is also here. I'd like to thank you, Committee Chair Bill Henry, for this opportunity to speak before you today, as well as the members of the Community Development Committee. Thank you, Councilmember Mary Pat Clark, for being here today. I would also like to thank the Baltimore City Mayor, Stephanie Rawlings Blake, and her team, as well as City Council Chair Jack Young, and Committee Chair Bill Henry, for your work and support that led to this proposed document. Comcast supports this video cable television franchise agreement, and we request your approval. Comcast has operated in the City of Baltimore since 2001. We offer video, voice, and high-speed Internet to virtually every resident and business that our plant infrastructure passes in Baltimore City. And we welcome this opportunity to be here before you today to share our story of Comcast in Baltimore City, and again, to request your approval of our video cable television franchise. Comcast Corporation is a financially stable Fortune 50 company that provides services in 39 states and the District of Columbia. Comcast is committed to being the best in class when it comes to technology, infrastructure, and people. At Comcast, we apply the latest technology, I'm sorry, we apply the latest innovation and technology to entertain, inform, and connect people in new ways. Comcast provides households and businesses with the ultimate in video, Internet, voice, home management, and business services. Xfinity TV offers customers the best viewing experience. On Xfinity One, we have, on Xfinity One, we have Xfinity TV apps and our X1 platform. I mention the X1 platform because it is our latest platform, and it really reflects the powerful innovation that delivers a superior video entertainment and communications experience that includes a talking guide, recently-launched voice remote, Xfinity One sports apps, and apps such as Xfinity TV and Share. So hopefully, one or two of you are customers and contest to the power and the excitement of those products. Comcast is fully committed to the goal of making customer service and the customer experience our best product. Comcast is taking the same focus that we've had on product, innovation, and technology experiences and applying that to customer service. This includes new cloud-based platforms to give our employees a better view of customers' accounts history, apps that put customers in the driver's seat to troubleshoot problems themselves, a new tech tracker, and a reimagined retail experience. In Baltimore City, this includes a state-of-the-art customer retail location with an anticipated opening in the first half of 2017, plus nearly 90 third-party locations for additional payment options, and the ability to return and exchange equipment free of charge at all UPS store locations. Comcast can also interact with our representatives by phone, live chat, and even Twitter and Facebook. We have a customer guarantee that guarantees our technicians will arrive within a two-hour appointment window, or we will provide an automatic $20 credit. Comcast technicians in the field in Baltimore will soon be equipped with technology that will allow customers to track the location of their technician while en route, and for our more tech-savvy customers, we offer self-installation kits. The Comcast culture is one that values accessibility, integrity, inclusion, and diversity, both within the workplace and how we relate to our customers. Comcast was once again named one of Baltimore Business Journal's 2016 Top Employers. Additionally, Comcast was recognized as the Maryland Daily Records Innovator of the Year this year for X1 en español. That allows Spanish-speaking customers the ability to change the language setting within their X1 boxes. Further, Comcast was listed among Diversity Inc.'s 2015 Top 50 Companies for Diversity, recognized as a top employer for Latinas on the 2014 Style 50 Report, and received a 2014 Best Places to Work for People with Disabilities designation. These values extend beyond the workplace to our customers. Most recently, Comcast launched the industry's first voice-guided TV interface. Our talking guide reads aloud channel names, shows titles and DVR commands. It allows search and discovery for people with visual impairments and other disabilities. This is the latest in consumer technology that is making a real and meaningful difference in the lives of our customers right here in Baltimore City. At Comcast, acting responsibly drives what we do every day. We are a global media and technology company that strives to make change happen in all of the communities we serve. Here in Baltimore City, we partner with local nonprofit organizations to maximize our impact in three core areas: digital literacy, community service, and youth education and leadership. Since 2001, Comcast has contributed over $13 million in in-kind and cash donations to nonprofits throughout Baltimore City. Our national partners located in Baltimore include the Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers and Big Sisters, the Greater Baltimore Urban League, and United Way of Maryland. Our local partners include the Family League, Associated Black Charities, Enoch Pratt Library, Black Professional Men, Casa de Maryland Welcome Center, Baltimore City's Community Action Partnership Centers, Delta Lambda Foundation Outreach Center, Digital Harbor Foundation, Education-Based Latino Outreach, Living Classrooms, my brother's keeper, I'm almost finished, St. Francis Neighborhood Center, Village Place, the 29th Street Community Center, and the Union Baptist Head Start Center, and this is to name a few. Our partnerships include both in-kind and monetary donations. Comcast's investment in the city also includes our Leaders and Achievers College Scholarship Program. Comcast has awarded over $104,000 in college scholarships to Baltimore City High School students since 2009. Every year since 2003, Comcast Corporation has an annual volunteer day, Comcast Cares Day, on which Comcast employees, their friends, and family join with community members to volunteer to improve local communities. Since 2003, more than 5,700 Comcast employees, friends, family members, and our community partners have volunteered and given more than $34,000 service hours at 20 projects in Baltimore City. To give you just a little view of it, the Comcast Cares Day locations over the last five years, Gwynn's Fall Elementary School, Tuanda Rec Center, Druid Hill Park, Middle Branch Park, and the Maryland Center for Veterans Education and Training, Carroll Park, and the Maryland Center for, again, the Maryland Center for Education. In 2016, over 600 volunteers came together to complete various beautification projects at Carroll Park and the Maryland Center for Veterans Education and Training. McVets, we like McVets. In addition, Comcast in Baltimore City is a significant economic engine in the city, as well as a significant employer of local residents. We estimate that we have an annual economic impact of $55 million on the city, which includes wages paid, supplies and equipment purchased, services secured, and utility expenses. On top of that, Comcast pays the City of Baltimore $17.5 million annually in franchise and public educational governmental access fees, along with conduit rentals, taxes, and fees. The proposed franchise agreement before you will provide Comcast with the right to continue to operate in the city so that our customers in Baltimore City continue to have access to a great and ever-evolving communications technology platform, and we continue to be a significant and vital corporate citizen. Pursuant to the terms of the proposed franchise agreement, Comcast has agreed to contribute $120 million to the City of Baltimore in cash and in-kind services over the 10-year agreement. Specifically, the parties have agreed to the maximum cable franchise fee allowed by law, which provides more than $70 million in revenue to the city. The parties agreed to $14 million in funding for public educational governmental access programming, which represents a 75% increase in financial support over the prior franchise agreement. Further, the proposed franchise agreement provides the city with the capability to air its public education and governmental access channels in high-definition, which means all city council meetings and public hearings can be aired in high-definition shortly after the agreement is signed. That's a good thing. I know. Is that a good, bad?
That's not necessarily a positive, but we appreciate the effort.
It's close up. You are, it's high visibility. You are absolutely right.
Do you have a version of it that's slimming?
The slimming version? It's the accurate version, right? It's the most accurate.
Is there an app for that?
There's an app for that. There is a slimming app for that. The proposed franchise agreement also allows the city to launch up to three new standard definition channels and one additional high-definition channel in the future. Comcast has also agreed to continue to provide over 300 courtesy cable television accounts to Baltimore City government buildings, schools, and libraries. The value of these courtesy services exceeds $3.3 million over the 10-year term. In addition to the obligation set forth in the proposed franchise agreement, Comcast has provided separate written commitments. A $400,000 commitment to fund the city's youth works program, a commitment to provide complimentary broadband service to 17 city locations, six computer labs in public housing, and 11 computer labs in recreation centers, for a total value over the franchise term of $543,000 in today's dollars. A $100,000 commitment to fund a grant for the purchase and replenishing of computers, of computer labs in recreation centers and public housing complexes. A commitment to expand Comcast Internet Essentials Program, the largest and most successful program in the U.S. focused on bridging the digital divide, to residents who reside in HUD housing. For designated 30-day period, we will provide all Baltimore residents who receive HUD assistance and sign up during that 30-day period and are approved with Comcast Internet Service, Internet Essentials Service for six months free. In closing, Comcast is proud to serve the City of Baltimore. We continue to make investments in the city, in our technology, infrastructure, and people, and to provide the best products and services to our customers. We support the proposed franchise agreement you have before you, as we believe it includes numerous benefits to the City of Baltimore and its residents. Again, I would like to acknowledge the committee, I'd like to acknowledge the mayor, the General Manager of Charm TV, Tanee Lee, and her whole legal team that negotiated this agreement with us over many, many months. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I hope you weren't feeling a little uncomfortable that you'd gone on for a bit, because you are nowhere near the record for this room.
Oh, there we go. Okay, good. Okay. And I was worried. I thought it was a little long, but...
No, no. And I mean, first, numerous people have gone on substantially longer than that, to the point where, to the point where the finally...
Well, I've got more. I've got, no.
Where finally was greeted with applause, not laughter. So, you're doing fine.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that very much.
I did want to ask one or two questions. I believe my colleague may have one or two questions as well. I believe my colleague may have one or two questions as well.
Okay.
Ladies first.
Oh. Yeah. Well, I haven't, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a strange question I'd like to ask you. One of the things that our constituents do not understand or believe, and is that this is not a franchise that is only grant, that granting this franchise does not exclude others from coming in to get a similar franchise.
Correct.
Now, I don't know who they would be, or, that's not my question.
Okay.
So, basically, so this is not an exclusive contract. Others can come in. No one has, but let's say someone did want to come in, and maybe I should ask the Law Department this, and maybe I'll wait and do that. How about that? Okay? Because that would be the better place, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. I can just absolutely say one sentence. It is absolutely a non-exclusive franchise, absolutely, and that's a federal requirement.
It's a federal requirement.
But I will let the, yeah, I will let the Law Department expand on that.
And I will come back, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to that, but I would like to ask you, these are not difficult questions, but they're important to me. How many people do you know how many people you employ, or what percentage of people you employ here in Baltimore for this franchise who live in Baltimore?
So, I don't actually have the exact number of our employees. I can tell you, what I do know is that sixty percent of our employees who, in Baltimore City, are Baltimore City residents. So, sixty percent of the employees that work for our cable company here in Baltimore City are city residents.
Well, that's a good number.
It's a great number, and it's, I can get this specific number for you.
That would be, that would be great. Let me ask you this about that. So, do you pay your employees what I would call a living wage, which, at this point, a living wage is based on the, well, Reverend Hathaway, he's an expert, because he's a, he's, it's the, it's the churches of Baltimore that invented living wage, including certainly union.
Right.
But what it is, is it's about eleven fifty an hour now, and that's all based on the entry level of poverty for a family of four by federal guidelines, and the amount changes every year. So, I mean, I'm going for fifteen dollars an hour, but let me ask you about living wage, because that's what we were recently asked about to do in another setting.
Right. I can get back to you on that. I absolutely know that our starting salary is, exceeds, for our, you know, bottom-level, you know, entry-level technicians exceeds eleven fifty, but let me, I will, I can get that for you.
See now, if they can do it...
Yeah.
You don't have to convince me.
I know I don't. It's just a good example, and I would like to, if you could get me...
Absolutely.
The numbers of people who work for you in the city, so therefore, the sixty percent live, and you don't have, I don't need their names, I mean, but then I will know that sixty percent live in the city.
No, you just want to know the numbers. Yep.
And then, I believe eleven fifty right now, maybe a little higher, but let's say that. The city establishes that every year, because we do have living wage for all contractual employees.
Right.
So, like, people that clean, or people that run parking garages that we own, et cetera.
Right.
So, if that's a contracted activity, then everyone who works on that contract must receive what is that year's living wage, and it continues to rise.
Absolutely.
So, that would be great.
Okay, absolutely.
If you could do that, because I'm looking around for examples.
Oh, I just wanted to say we've been joined by Councilman William Pete Welch of the Ninth District and a member of the committee.
Good afternoon, Councilmember.
I have a couple other questions. Do you mind?
So, the other point I did want to make about that is, so, the sixty percent I was speaking about was of our employees that work for the Baltimore City system. The number I'd like to get you as well is that, you know, we're, the entire, we have the region, so we're in Maryland, we're in Delaware, we're in D.C. We have a, we have a significant amount of Baltimore City residents that work for us, not only in Baltimore City, but work for us throughout the region.
I see what you're saying.
So...
Yeah, that would be great.
I think Ms. Lee wanted to try to add to the answer. I think you have to come up to the podium.
Really? The microphone's not working?
Well, when they're doing the TV version, they like to just be able to keep the camera on.
Thank you, men. Thank you. I just wanted to weigh in that during our negotiations, we did bring in representatives from the mayor's Office of Employment Development, and in those conversations, we were very pleased to learn that Comcast more than exceeds the city's requirements, not only on the employment development side, but also on the MBE, WBE requirements.
I was just going to ask about that, so maybe you can tell me. So...
I will certainly try.
You know, there was a big, Johns Hopkins University, so I'm honored to represent Homewood Campus in my district, and the president, Ron Daniels, of Hopkins University, really impressed me after our troubles in adopting a bi-local policy for the whole institution, Hopkins Institution, and asking other businesses to join in. Bi-local, meaning they're, you know, support local subcontractors, support local MBEs and WBEs as suppliers to the businesses and institutions, encourage suppliers to move to Baltimore, to be close to the place they're supplying over, you know, big time. And so, I was wondering about Comcast's policies and records there. I mean, I didn't ask this in advance, but if they've got sixty percent of their city cable workers who live here, and they're paying generally living wage, gee whiz, it can be done.
Yeah. So, I will ask Comcast to speak more specifically on the MBE elements. I will say, though, in the franchise is a annual reporting requirement and a meeting requirement to walk through those statistics with not only the team at MBE, but also my office has agreed to kind of guide those conversations as well, and to ensure that that reporting does in fact happen.
Great. I would like to, thank you. I would like to say that the Comcast people have been great to all my senior citizens, hundreds of them, at Stadium Place, who live in four separate apartment buildings, all on-site.
Wonderful.
And...
Glad to hear that.
Yeah. Antoine and his people came in, took all the complaints, took all the ideas, worked them all through with everybody. I mean, okay, if you're watching, everybody, it's not perfect. I know that. I'll be back. But it's great.
Thank you.
It was great. People were heard, and that's what's really important, and responded to, big time. It was great.
Great. Thank you.
And so, and we're working on another little project there, that I'm hoping we can make a success. I mean, you guys are doing your share. We need the partners to start getting it. So now, I'd like to ask you a personal question.
Me or her?
Not about you. Not you. Is there ever going to be a way that I can operate these things that run television sets effectively? I mean...
Yes, our voice remote. You just talk to it.
Okay, because, wait a minute. So, I got this one. Here it is. Like, it's a guy thing, right? It's a guy thing. First of all, who controls the remotes is, it's a guy thing. I mean, I think, I'm just being general, but I get that. And, okay, but every once in a while, you know, you want to watch television, and there's no guy around to do that. So, you say, well, I got these two remotes. So, I know that this one, because it's rectangular, has a red button, and I have to hit that first. And as far as I know, that's the last and only thing that remote does. It turns the television on. Then, in my right hand, it's rectangular, but it's got rounded corners. There's another one, and that's what does everything else, if you're lucky. I'm not, there's nothing wrong, it works. I can make it even work. This is the channel, and this is the volume. I can do that. But there are all these other things on that that...
The buttons that you just don't...
Right, and if things go wrong, and the screen goes funny, and you have to resort to one, you have to do something about it, is there ever going to be a way that people like me, who are not good at this stuff, can just run it, know that if you're home alone with a television set, you have a half of a shot of being able to watch?
That's a tough question.
I know it is. I know.
Well, so, the...
I'm just to see how you react.
Is there going, here, here's the big question about that. Everything improves. It's not just you, it's everywhere. I mean, I go and visit my children in Boston, in Los Angeles, everybody's got the same deal.
Right. That they, that you've got multiple remotes.
Yes, there's always more than one remote, and they seem to do these different things, and you have to know how it works. Is there ever going to be a time when it gets itself made in a more effective way to do things, do you think? Do you know, you don't know what I, you don't really know what I mean?
Well, for the Comcast television product, Xfinity TV, we only have one remote that would, you know, we have a remote, if you have X1, it's a different remote, but then we have a remote that it, do you have our X1?
I have no idea.
Okay, well, you have to have, but you're a customer.
I'm a Comcast customer.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the X1 remote is amazing. It's, you can, it's a talking remote, so you can talk into it.
Oh, wow, you can talk to it?
You can talk to it, and it can...
Can you say...
I want to see, you say sports, you say Baltimore City, you know...
Public television.
City Council, you say Charm TV, and it will direct you to that. But, you know, we also, you know, have the...
So, you can talk to it.
Right. But we also have apps, which, I don't know if that's something that would help.
So, in other words, it's getting to be like, you can, you're getting to the point where you can talk it into operational fitness?
I think, because even though I work for a technology company, I'm technology-challenged, that the talking remote is a complete game changer, and it's a game changer for the disability, for the physically challenged, the visually challenged.
Yeah, I mean, I'm really not just speaking for myself. I know that there are a lot of people, it's, that don't know how to, that can't do the, all these things.
Right.
You memorize a couple of functions to get on, and...
So, I mean, it sounds like customer education is what you need, and we have apps for that. You can call us. We have it on, we have it on the TV, on the on-demand. We're going, we mentioned this new Xfinity store that we are building...
And you're building one in my district?
We're building one in your district.
We're very pleased.
And I don't think it has what, you know, the Genius Bar, but it has, as the app stores do, where you can come and get customer education, but it's the same concept.
Really bright bar.
I'm sorry.
A really bright bar.
The really, really bright bar, but a customer education focus. So, I think that's something, but obviously...
So, a store like that, you'll be able to help us? I mean, it's, it's, there's really no, yeah, way to learn it, I mean, otherwise.
Well, Antoine can show you whatever you need, but for all of our customers, there's online, there's calling us, there's information, there's customer education on the television, there's through our store locations, our, you know, oftentimes, we, the technicians will come to your house.
That, what, they, your people are very wonderful on the phone, they're great.
Thank you.
They come, they come when they say they're going to come. I mean, this is my experience.
Right.
And when they get there, they actually do something, and they actually stay with it till it gets fixed?
I appreciate that, Councilmember.
Yeah, it's true. This is not a criticism.
Thank you.
It's really...
It's customer education, and you want to know how, what are the opportunities for customer education?
Yeah, and I've got a lot of people that, I mean, I'm using myself as an example just because I am, but there's a lot of other people that...
Who want to maximize the use of the product.
Maximize the use of what...
Exactly.
They're paying for, and don't have the, don't know how.
Are you online? Do you, are you online as well? We have an online MyTV app.
I do.
That's a great way to...
I can, I mean, I could do that.
To troubleshoot, but we're going to make sure you know how to use it.
Okay.
And get the most, get the most out of it.
Then I can help other people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My only comment is that, living as I do in a house entirely of women other than myself, the concept of the man having the remote is an attractive one.
But not one you would experience.
And one which, in my home, requires extraordinarily quick reflexes, and a willingness to struggle that I don't always have at the end of the day, so...
You're a lovely man.
Can I make one more comment? Just, Councilmember, we have three customer service folks with us here today, and they would be very willing and very happy, and more able...
They were already actually very happy. They were really enjoying watching you have to do this.
How is she going to explain this? But we'd love to have them talk to you after, if that would help.
Sure.
Thanks.
I'm going to have to have...
You got to bring him with you.
Yeah, things in my hand to make any conversation make sense, but thank you for just...
Thank you.
Talking to me about that.
I did also have a couple of questions before we move on, because I know you have some partners that you wanted to have, and we wanted to hear from them as well. You had mentioned the total value of the, what Comcast is providing as one hundred and twenty million, seventy million of which was essentially cash, the fee, and then the rest being in-kind and the value of some of the things in the site agreement. What I wanted to ask...
So, seventy million, it's actually eighty-four million that's the cash piece.
Eighty-four.
So, the seventy million is the franchise fee, and then the fourteen million is the support for the public education governmental access channels.
The peg, okay, got you.
Okay, the peg, yep.
So, I guess what I was trying to pin down is the fact that all city buildings have complimentary cable hookups, and I believe all schools have cable hookups, and I don't, I don't mean this to disparage the value of the service that the cable alone provides, but, for example, upstairs in my office, there is a little TV left to me by my predecessor that sits on a back shelf and is connected to the cable hookup. Between it and me is the computer monitor on my desk, and in all candor, the TV rarely, if ever, gets used, because anything that I might be inclined to try to get from it, I'm going to get from the computer monitor. And so, what I was curious about was, could you break out how much of the... And so, what I was curious about was, could you break out how much of the 26 million? That's not in the 84, so, the, no, more than that, 36, would be 36 million. Um, how much of the difference between the peg and the franchise cash and the total value of the 120 million? How much of that is the complimentary service to the government offices, which may not be being fully utilized? And how much is the complimentary service to the school system? Which, and I think we had talked about that at one of our previous briefings. I'm still looking to hear from somebody in the school system that they use this. That this, I, I, I get that, you know, a decade ago, when the, this was last negotiated, there may have been more of a way to integrate television into daily curriculum. But from the visits I've made to the schools in my district, no one is using TV. They're only using internet. And so, I, I'm appreciative of the inclusion, but I'm, I feel like it's my responsibility in this capacity to question its value if it's not actually being used.
And so, you, you have absolutely asked us about this and so, three point, we are, we are allocating, uh, 3.3 million uh, to the value of the contract, um, that's associated with the, um, courtesy video services. And so.
Just one sheet.
I absolutely understand, um, you know, we're in both businesses. We're in the cable vis, business, you know, happily, because it is our business and this is a cable agreement. Uh, the majority of, uh, our customers consume their content, uh, on the big screen, on the television, so, um, which is why I still have a job. So, um, in terms of the utility of it at the school systems, I think it, it varies. Uh, we know school districts that, um, integrated the cable in the classroom programming tremendously in the curriculum. And, uh, Baltimore City, I know when we made the transition in Baltimore from our analog to our digital, um, it was a tireless effort at that point to make sure that the video services and the superintendent at that time, who I can't, I recall his name, uh, was very insistent that they still have access to the video programming, the courtesy video programming. This was when we made the transition, because at one point we went from analog to digital.
Was that during this franchise or was that during?
That was during this franchise term.
I guess the statist, the statistical likelihood is it was Dr. Alonso, but.
Was it Dr. Alonso? Yes.
Okay.
Okay, you're absolutely right. That's the name.
It's, it's a numbers game, but go on.
So, you know, again, this is a cable television video franchise and that's, uh, the business we're in as well as the internet business. But, uh, the cable, this is the cable agreement. I absolutely agree with you that, um, having, uh, the internet in, uh, classrooms across the country and in homes across the country is absolutely essential and it's, it's a business and it's a initiative, as you know, that we take extremely seriously. Uh, the digital divide, uh, and breaching the digital divide is our number one, um, community investment initiative, uh, at Comcast. So, the internet essentials is our way, uh, of, of doing that. And, um, so I, I, I hear you and I agree with you that the internet is absolutely essential in classrooms. That's absolutely essential in all homes. Um, and that's something that we would like to see, uh, happen as well.
Um, just, uh, another clarification. So the 3.3 million, that is for, that's for all government buildings?
Correct.
That includes the schools?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so that's everybody. Um, now, I'm trying to figure out that, the best way to ask this, I think it's a pretty straightforward question. But I guess when you value that 3.3 million in providing the complimentary service to all the school buildings, that's valued as if each of the individual hookups involved were trying to become an individual customer of Comcast for the basic cable package that's provided?
It's valued by the number of accounts that, uh, we have with the city. So that's how we value it.
But in terms of.
Does an account have more than one?
What you would charge a customer for the account as opposed to, and this is, you know, a subtle, but I think important difference, as opposed to what it costs you to provide the service? Like, it doesn't cost you 3.3 million dollars to provide complimentary service?
Absolutely. It's the value.
It's the value.
It's the value. It's the value of the service. Absolutely.
Um, the other numbers question that I wanted to just make sure we have straight, and I know, um, you probably don't have this number available right now.
Okay.
But, um, we had also discussed, uh, as, uh, possible options in the side agreement, uh, additional, uh, internet locations out in the community. And, um, I understand that in some cities across the country, they have negotiated a different balance with their side agreements. We've negotiated a balance that is heavy on the fee that we're going to be receiving. And I, you know, on behalf of everyone in this building, I know that especially the finance department on the fourth floor here is looking forward to that fee and probably knowing Mr. Klein has already budgeted it and spent it over the course of the, you know, next decade. Um, but in other cities, they have negotiated a different balance where there's a higher percentage of, uh, shall we say, community enhancement and a lower amount of straight out cash to the city. Um, if we were to value those type of community enhancements, how would we calculate that? Like, if we wanted to ask Comcast to provide 100 locations around the city for, um, you know, for rec centers or community centers or, um, churches that provide, uh, community activities? If we wanted to identify those locations as ones that would benefit from being free public hotspots, um, how could, how could we value that against what the corresponding reduction would be in the fee that we would ask from Comcast?
So, I, I, I can get you the value of, of our service. Um, again, it's a, you know, in, in certainly the city representatives and the legal department were, um, we were all of the same mind and, and understanding of the federal law that it's a, you know, video cable television franchise. Um, and we, yet and still, we have, uh, provided by a side letter that's not part of the franchise, uh, pretty significant, um, commitments, broadband commitments. And in addition to courtesy services to public housing and rec centers and, uh, a computer grant. Um, but I can absolutely get you, uh, the additional number that you're, you're looking for. And, and just as you've set it out in the beginning, communities, you know, these agreements, you know, they're complex agreements, um, and communities make, um, different, uh, decisions. The decision that, you know, that is here, um, obviously is, this is a cable television, uh, agreement and the city has negotiated the maximum amount, uh, of dollars.
And I just want to be clear, um, and I'm particularly, uh, sensitive to this given the last 18 or 19 weeks of, uh, our civic engagement here in Baltimore around some other, uh, issues that have, uh, been the focus of the council's deliberations. I don't think that what I'm envisioning is a moving of the goalposts in terms of, I would be happy to acknowledge that, uh, Comcast and the city have negotiated, um, a, a package in which total compensation is probably appropriate. Um, what I'm more curious about is tweaking the levels, not the total amount. Just like maybe a little bit more of this, a little bit less of that. Not with the idea that Comcast not, not necessarily provides more in general, but maybe provides more of this and less of that instead of more of that and less of this.
Right. I guess the only thing, and I, and I understand, um, your concerns. The only thing I would like to point out is, again, so this is a video cable television franchise and the internet and broadband is not a part of that. But as I said before, um, you know, broaching the digital divide is our number one community investment initiative. And so there are numerous commitments that we make and I, I know some of our partners, um, here today will talk about that. Um, the commitments that we make, um, on broadband in this, in, um, in the city. I mentioned Enid Pratt Library. It's, um, one of, it is our largest training partner where we train for, uh, digital literacy. Um, we, I think we have over, we've had over 90 trainings at Enid Pratt Library for digital literacy. Um, I mentioned, um, I don't know if I gave you this number, but over 2 million, uh, Americans have been connected to the internet through Internet Essentials, uh, program. And so here in Baltimore City, which we've not rolled out in any other community, we're opening, uh, the program for 30 days for families who live in public housing, who are, live in HUD assisted pa, public hu, HUD housing. Uh, the opportunity to have six months free, uh, internet. Um, and that's really just one of the commitments. We have numerous digital literacy training partners across the city. We, we, oh, here in, uh, Baltimore, it was the first and it is our only currently Internet Essentials learning zone where we, and this is throughout the region and our region is Delaware, Maryland, DC, Virginia and West Virginia. So, throughout that region in Baltimore City is our first, uh, Internet Essentials learning zones where we connect, uh, 16 different locations and 12 different partners to the internet, uh, providing free wifi access. And really, our goal there is to comm, to, I see Reverend Hathaway has to leave, but we appreciate him coming.
Yeah.
I will step aside for a second.
Uh, um, Brother Chair, Bill Henry, Sister Murray Pat Clark. Have to pick my wife up from the airport at 6:25. I played it all the way to the last minute and, uh.
It's gonna take a miracle, Reverend.
But, but, but I would, do want to say Union Baptist is one of the Comcast essential partners. Uh, back on April the 4th, we had a 12-hour hackathon with youth from the community and Baltimore City Public Police, looking at how they could develop an application to improve police community relations. It was an amazing experience. And right now, we will end on, um, on next Tuesday, the 27th, a 12-week cyber senior program. We have a professor from University of Maryland who is, uh, working with seniors, uh, who has a PhD in nursing informatics and a master's degree in gerontology. And they're working with 19 of our seniors to help them understand how to communicate with their, uh, relatives. And it's just an amazing piece. Dr. Leah Wynn is coming out on the 27th when we actually graduate that first class. And then on October the 8th, we're going to have a cohort of young people who will be in a, what we call our Jutopia Entrepreneurs in Training. So we're going to teach them also the business side of computer technology and software. And by us being a Comcast Essential Learning Zone Center, we all, we have free access to wifi and also the support of Comcast to assist us with the work that we're doing. And you know where we are? We're right there in Upton, right there bordering, uh, the McCullough Homes, uh, public housing project, right in that, right in the area that is, uh, really one of the areas that is seen as being a, uh, area where you have a digital divide. And because of this, we're able to, uh, bridge that, uh, that divide.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Reverend, Reverend, while you're proceeding to BWI at a safe and legal speed, it, it, it would be inappropriate for you to ask for someone up above to hold your wife's plane on the tarmac? So don't even, don't even let that thought cross your mind.
Thank you, sir. So, I think, um, you know, Reverend Hathaway is one of our partners. And so, you know, I, we're very proud of, of what we've done nationally and in Baltimore City uh, to address the digital divide that is very real. And again, it is our number one commitment.
Okay. Well, why don't we hear from more of your partners?
Absolutely.
Do you want to, do you, um, do you have a, a particular speaking order you prefer? Should we just go by order that they signed in?
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll just.
Whatever works for the committee.
And we will, then we will just proceed down the, uh, the list of people who have signed in to testify. Appropriately enough, Dr. Hathaway was first on the list. Um, I, I will note.
We didn't even know about the.
I, I will, I will, I will note for the rest of your partners that, um, evidently, Dr. Hathaway must come here more often than some of the rest of you because he knew to actually check the box here saying, "I want to testify." And, and not, not, not in, it, none, none of the rest of your partners.
No, I apologize for that oversight.
Apparently, they just want to be here to offer their strong silence for it. But, but what we'll do is we'll go to the list, um, in order and, and, and ask them if they would like to come up and say a few words. Uh, Mr. Sims.
Thank you very much.
From ABC. And, and please introduce yourself to the television audience when you come to the podium.
Sure. Uh, my name is Bernard Sims with Associated Black Charity. Uh, thank you for having me here, Mr. Chairman and panel guests. Um, Comcast has been a great partner for Associated Black Charities, uh, primarily with our volunteer career mentoring program. We get a grant from Comcast we have for the past, uh, three years and that helps us expand our technology reach for our entry-level workers. In our volunteer career mentoring program, we work with entry-level employees. Uh, for some, it may be their first job. And so what we do, we connect them to a initiative that we have called Tech Tips. And so we use our dollars from Comcast to create these five to seven-minute videos that we place on our website. And folks can actually go to the website and learn about different, uh, computer programs that they may not be used to, which kind of is an appetizer to get them to the next level of computer literacy. Um, so that has been a great initiative. We just got our, uh, year three funding, uh, from Comcast and so we're really excited about that. We've been able to, uh, increase our funding for the past three years. So it hasn't been the same funding, it's been a, a different amount for the past three years. So we're excited about that. We're also excited that they're one of our major supporters for our ABC Gala, which also allows us to provide a lot of services for, uh, Baltimore City residents. And so we're just, you know, really excited here to speak about, you know, the great support that Comcast provides for us and also for the, um, citizens of Baltimore. I, I will speak as a father of, um, two twins from Baltimore City Public Schools. I remember when they were in middle school, how big the Internet Essentials program was and how attractive it was for the families who may not have been able to afford a larger package of the internet program. But the Internet Essentials program was a very good program. And so as a father, I know that Comcast have been doing great work also in some of the middle schools and even for some of the kids to be able to get technology more affordable into their homes. So, we view Comcast as a great partner, um, and we're happy to be in, be here to support them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have Mr. Nelson.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Bruce Nelson. I represent Family League of Baltimore as a director of high school initiatives. Family League serves as the architect of change in Baltimore by promoting data-driven collaborative initiatives and aligning resources to create lasting outcomes for children, families and communities. As a strategic partner with Internet Essentials Learning Zone, Comcast has partnered with Family League to help families receive affordable internet service, which provides families with vital access to the internet at home and the Comcast STEM Makers Club, which is an enrichment program that has provided resources at our community schools in the area of STEM. Comcast has provided over $40,000 that has connected over 70 students with expanded academic and enrichment opportunities that may not have been available otherwise. We are extremely fortunate to celebrate the partnership between Comcast. We are extremely fortunate to celebrate the partnership between Comcast and Family League. These opportunities, which are coordinated at community schools, enable our organization to strive towards fulfilling our bold goal that by 2030, all children in Baltimore will be born healthy, succeed in school, graduate high school, and transition into higher education and the workforce. I want to publicly thank Brad Palazzo for all of his support over the last few years and our continued partnership moving forward. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next, we have Matthew from the Boys and Girls Club. I, I, we're having, we're having trouble making out your last name on this.
Not only is it terrible penmanship, but the last name is Death.
Okay, all right, so sadly, we weren't having trouble, we just didn't want to accept that.
Right, most people don't want to say it until they know me.
Okay, so, Mr. Death.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Again, Matthew Death, Vice President of Boys and Girls Club, Metropolitan Baltimore's Community Partnerships. Real quickly, our partnership with Comcast, they provide, they, over the last six years, they've given us about grants worth around $100,000, and what that money has been able to do is provide all of our centers. We now have eight different centers throughout Baltimore City that surround the city, the metropolitan area specifically, and gives our children the ability to do programming on a national level that is focused on commuter, excuse me, computer literacy. And of course, the children that we serve don't always have those opportunities, so it is vital at this point for us to continue to grow our children where they want, where we want them to be, to have partners like Comcast to supply this, these internet providers. And the biggest part I would like to stress about what Comcast does for us is, they are national partners with Boys and Girls Club of America. There are plenty of partnerships with Boys and Girls Club of America that do not focus on the local level. Boys and Girls Club Metropolitan Baltimore can stand up here and say that they are proud to continue to sponsorship with Comcast. We are, not only do they help service our children, but the centers that we have are community staples. We are able to open up our computer centers and the internet that we get from them to, for parents to do job applications. If you need to sign up for the library card, we provide those systems because of what Comcast gives to us. And a real, real quick, I'm not going to take up anyone else's time, I don't know if anyone else has to go to the airport or not, but we, there is a young man, 17-year-old teenager named Corey Thompson, he's over at Westport Homes, and attendance, school, after-school activities, Boys and Girls Club has always been his issue. We have a program called MyFuture.net, which is a national partnership that comes from Comcast and Boys and Girls Club of America that we get to utilize there, and it's introduction into coding and one of those trick things where you learn to do things by playing a game, the next thing you know, you're educated, that we pride ourselves on. So, Corey hit, hit it off with MyFuture.net. Corey's attendance went up. Corey had to come back, or summer and after-school programs are different, and I won't go into all that with you, but Corey offered to come and help, help the younger children with MyFuture.net. And things like this that Comcast have given to us, now not only we teaching the children, but the children are teaching the children who are teaching the parents in some cases too, so for us, as a Baltimore City resident and a Comcast provider and from a professional partnership, I'm very much for this.
Do you do any work with the Algebra Project?
Me personally, no.
I mean, well, the, the center.
I don't know. Fortunately, I get to come here and talk to you guys and not work with the kids one-on-one like they're doing right now, so I would need to get one of our excellent program developers here there for that.
Okay, if you, we're not going to be much longer, so can you stick around until this is over and we can talk a little about that?
Sure.
Because the Algebra Project, that's, you know, what they're known for is that they use older kids to tutor and teach younger kids.
Gotcha.
And that, and...
Probably officially, we do not, we just unofficially have our older kids help us.
Yeah, okay.
So...
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Howard Henderson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity, members of the committee. One member now, we lost one, okay.
Yeah, Councilman, Councilman Welch was only stopping in to show his respect for the assemblage. He had a previous engagement and...
I do understand. Well, I'm Jay Howard Henderson, I'm the President and CEO of the Greater Baltimore Urban League. I'm just here to voice my support for Comcast, for the renewal of that franchise, for the cable system. But Comcast has been a partner with the Urban League ever since I've been there, since 2000. I, I came on board in 2000 to work with, at the Urban League, and so they've been a very strong partner with the Urban League. They came in, and we were one of their sites, early sites for Comcast carriers. They came in and provided a lot of labor and sweat equity, but also provided us with a $50,000 support grant to help us bring our facility up to, up to standard. But over the years since 2000, they've been very strong partners in terms of supporting our annual gala and our other fundraising activities, which allows us to provide money to support our youth programs. Those dollars go to support our youth programs, and one of our strong youth programs is our Saturday Leadership Program, which is a program designed for young people between, from middle school to high school, to provide them with access and a pathway to success by, by offering them an opportunity to visit all of the colleges on the Baltimore footprint. So, for, this is our fourth year of that cohort, and we have visited every school, what I call on the Baltimore footprint, that means they're on the metro line. We have been to Goucher, we have been to Notre Dame, we've been to Stevenson, we've been to Morgan, we've been to Coppin, UMBC, and one of the things that, with those dollars of support, has provided us to be able to provide those opportunities to our young people in Baltimore. This year, we have over 100 and some kids in our cohort program, which just kicked off in September. So, it's a great program, so you all, when you get a chance, need to come by and visit us on one Saturday, and I will send you the schedule, Mr. Chairman, so you'll know exactly when we are, and maybe you can come out and speak to our kids. But that's through the efforts and funding of Comcast. But more importantly, and I say more importantly, besides the dollars and cents that they provide to us, but they, we got the brain power of Antoine, who's on my board, and which makes it more important to have that kind of input on your board level. You know, a lot of people come and give you dollars, but in terms of just thinking through the process, some of the challenges that you face, it's more important sometimes than dollars to have some people to sit down and help you critically think through your new, your strategic plan. So, Antoine, he heads up our program committee, so with that, with that support, it's been very helpful. So, I'm here to strongly voice my support for renewal of the franchise agreement for Comcast, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Speaking of brain power, the last person we have signed up would be Mr. Banks. If, if, did you wish to add additional to, okay, then we are gonna...
I have some money here.
Yeah, that's, an exceptional use of brain power is involved in not speaking when it's not necessary.
I would like, if Victor could just address my question, which is the...
Come on up.
No, it's, it's not a trick question.
He still has to, he still has to come up to the podium to answer.
Would you? It is simply the issue of how, this is not an exclusive contract, or it doesn't have to be. Oh, I'm sorry. Minden, I apologize to you.
It's 100% not an exclusive, and anybody else who wants to offer cables...
Get it tilted.
Lower?
Tilt it, tilt, tilt the microphone.
Tilt the microphone down.
Bring it to you, there you go, there we go.
Okay.
And tell us your whole name.
You got to come right up to it, there you go.
And say your whole name.
Okay, my full name is Minden Goldberg, I'm a chief city solicitor, and this cable agreement with Comcast is non-exclusive, non-exclusive. We've, in fact, asked other cable operators if they're interested in coming into the city, and so far, nobody else is. If anybody ever expresses an interest, there's nothing in this cable franchise that would prevent us from issuing another one.
So, Ms. Goldberg, if somebody did come that wanted to compete, they would have, and, and they entered into a contract with the city, they could use the conduits, I mean, they would pay the same, I mean, they would, basically, part of what has been discussed is there's a fee for using the conduits, there's, they would be subject to...
The franchise.
They, you know, the, the, providing the governmental, educational programs, public service channels.
Correct.
And they would have an opportunity, they wouldn't have to compete, it wouldn't be Comcast against this other corporation.
No.
They wouldn't have to compete, they could come in, if they could negotiate with the city, which is all about using, what is, why do they need us?
Because they're using our conduit system.
Because they're using our conduit system. So, it would be about that, and then it would be about their competing for customers.
Which would be their business, not our business. That would be their business, to get their customers.
That would be their business, but they would have the right to come and negotiate with the city to provide conduit, excuse me, cable, television, video service.
Correct.
To the residents, to the households of Baltimore.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, I think we have, so we, that's all the public testimony we have in terms of people signed up to testify. Is there anybody who thinks that they signed up to testify and their name was not called? Okay, excellent. As we no longer have quorum, we will not be voting tonight. That also, I think, is helpful in that it provides time for Comcast to get those last few numbers that we had asked about. And what I'm going to do right now is announce a voting session for Thursday, October 6th, at 2:00 PM here in the council chambers, and adjourn this hearing at this point. Thank you for attending. Please check the area around your seat to make sure that when you leave, you take everything with you that you brought. We'll be closing the room shortly, and seeing as how it is after 6:00, City Hall is now closed, so we ask that you proceed directly to the first floor exit and enjoy the remainder of your evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.